Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the city regular scheduled city council meeting for October eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Let the record show all council presidents except for councillors Justin Fossil and Jay Hope. We have add and deletes. Add recognition of K-9 Chase. Modify closed session. Modify department. Commit ports number three A. Could I ask for approval of agenda? Move by councillor Bayless.
Support.
Support by councillor Swyberger. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Approve minutes. Approve the minutes of Hibbing City Council meeting of October fourth, twenty twenty-three. Wishes of the council?
Motion approved.
Motion approved.
Support.
By councillor Whitney. Support by councillor Hoffman. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Move on consent agenda. Approve accounts payable dated ten thirteen, twenty twenty-three. Checks number one seven five seven four three through number one seven five eight three five in amount of six hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars and eighty-one cents. Two approve. City payroll for pay period ending ten six twenty-three. Checks number one six eight eight two one through one six eight eight two eight in amount of seven hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars and ninety cents. Three approve the renewal of the twenty twenty-four Blue Cross Blue Shield Group Medical Care Plan for the post-sixty-five retirees. Four approve the renewal of twenty twenty-four Northern Minnesota Dental Insurance Plan for active employees retirees. Five authorize the hire of Jermaho for the full-time engineering technician. Motion pin pre-employment contingencies. Six office Kelly Grinsteiner for the full-time marketing communications manager position effective November sixth, twenty twenty-three. Seven authorize the posting of full-time auto truck driver for the sanitation department. Eight acknowledge the resignation of Joe Burns, parole officer at the Hibbing Police Department, effective October twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. Nine approve the security camera policy effective October nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Ten approve the sewer credit policy effective October nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Eleven authorize posting of temporary rink attendant for the city service department. Twelve accept and place on file Hibbing Department Activities Report for September twenty twenty-three. Thirteen authorize the hire of Chris Beal for full-time collection system in his position with the sanitary and storm sewer department. Fourteen authorize the posting of full-time collection system operator with sanitary and storm sewer department. Fifteen authorize the hire Michael Sergeant for full-time skilled labor position with the public works department ending pre-employment contingencies. Sixteen authorize the hire of Todd Sempler for full-time automotive mechanic with the public works department pending pre-employment contingencies. Seventeen authorize the hire for pass for automated truck driver with the sanitation department pending pre-employment contingencies. Eighteen set the next regular council meeting for Wednesday, November first, twenty twenty-three, five P M. In the city council chamber. Nineteen set the regular next council workshop meet for Wednesday, November first, twenty twenty-three, following the regular meet in the city council chambers. We have two items previously approved. Authorize the Hibbing City Council to attend the trick and treat creek on the front lawn of City Hall on Saturday, October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. And lastly, set the public hearing for the adoption of Nino Levy on Wednesday, December sixth, twenty twenty-three, the City Hall Council Chambers. Hearing all, wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read and published.
We have a motion by councillor Hoffman.
Support.
Support by councillor Whitney. All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to department committee reports. We'll start with city attorney, Mr. Borland.
Mayor members of the council, within your pack is a proposed resolution twenty-three dash one zero dash zero nine. This is a plat exemption for the Hibbing Economic Development Authority. For those of you on Hida and for those who aren't, Hida's been initiatives to sell a piece of property in North Hibbing in or around the old Chau sticks factory. The part that's been negotiated though isn't, is part of a large parcel and so this application went first to the planning commission for consideration to agree to the split of the parcel. It's now for you for approval this evening so that sale in theory can move forward.
Very good. Hearing what Mr. Borland had to say. Wishes of the council?
Motion.
Motion approved by councillor Swyberger.
Support.
By councillor Hoffman. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Be, Mr. Borland.
Mayor members of the council, on that same issue, because we are a statutory city, when the city and/or its arm, in this case, Hida, is going to sell the property, there is a provision, because we are statutory city and we have a development within our city, we're supposed to refer these matters to the planning commission for consideration to make sure you're selling property that consists for its use. This resolution is to waive that consideration by the planning commission and have the council go ahead and address it. This is the, it's represented to Hida as to what, this is Rich and Sherry Lees are proposing to purchase this property. It's going to be used for essentially a large storage warehouse area is, is what Mr. Lees is proposing anyway, Hida, that he's going to use it for, and there are conditions on him to follow through with that. So this is simply to waive the planning committee considering that and just allowing the council to consider it and to waive that step.
Very good. Hearing what Mr. Borland has to say. Wishes of the council?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by councillor Swyberger.
Support.
Support by councillor Hoffman. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. We move on to chief of police, Mr. Esti.
Councilor, good evening. Earlier in the agenda tonight, I got the resignation of Officer Burns going to Itasca County Sheriff's Office. With this move for him, I have a proposal in front of you to sell K-9 Chase to Itasca County. After meeting with their sheriff and the K-9 program coordinator, McDonough, we came to the agreement to five thousand dollars. Itasca County Sheriff is on board with this as well. Chase is at a point in his career where he doesn't have a lot of time left and we feel this is a fair amount of money to take for Chase. Looking council approval to sell Chase to Itasca on a five thousand dollars.
Hearing what Chief Esti had to say. Wishes of the council?
I'll make the motion to approve.
We have a motion by councillor Bayless. Support by councillor Swyberger. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you for being part of the department for past few years and we appreciate what Chase has for our community as well as you. Thank you.
I just want to second what councillor Hoffman said had to say and I think that's a fair price. You know, Chase has had what, some years of service already, so he's at the end of his career and an outstanding career at that, so that's what I have to say. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Thanks.
Okay, we move on to city service director Nick Corolla.
Good evening, mayor, council. Tonight in your packet, I'm looking for approval on track for professional services with BAR Engineering. Begin phase two of the Kerry Lake Campground Development. This is strategic objective number two in our strategic planning process as outlined in our twenty twenty session that we did. Kerry Lake Campground was the number one on our high priority list for twenty twenty-four action. So this is the next step in the process with BAR would be to go to design with this project, taking into consideration the previous design that was completed for us. This will take us from design all the way through construction if we do any construction next season, next year. And it is a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, one ninety-four hundred dollars. And again, the biggest price increase that we found out recently was because we have to do an archaeological survey on the site out there. Since we received it in our grant, we're using state money for this project, we have to do an archaeological survey, which is going to cost us roughly fifty thousand dollars extra that we weren't planning, and that is included in BAR's proposal right here. So they have archaeological staff that will handle that portion of it for us. So obviously, if they do find something along the way, change orders will come after that, but we're assuming that the site is clear or we may have to shift the site depending on if anything was ever found, but we're hoping to go through that process and check that box. So I'm just looking for your approval to sign the agreement and move forward with them. They would like to do the archaeological survey yet fall, so.
Very good. Hearing what Mr. Corolla had to say regarding our proposed camp ground at Kerry Lake. Wishes of the council?
Motion approve.
Motion approved by councillor Whitney.
Support.
Support by councillor Bayless. Any discussion? Dick, I apologize. I missed that and I went through my agenda and I asked you if there was documentation. I don't know how I missed it, but I did have a chance to speed read it before and I see the full documentation is there. Thank you. You know, I like that BAR is, they did our park plan. It stays in line with what they have done with already. So I appreciate the opportunity, you know, to continue working with in the future. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number four, Mr. Urtich, Public Works.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm here to ask for our twenty twenty-four axylene resolution for Jesse Story. It's to seal city streets and state aid streets and the estimated cost would be twenty-five thousand, five thirty-five for the city and state aid streets would be forty-nine thousand, seven oh two fifty. The twenty-four budget would be cover the city's cost and we could use state aid funds to do the state aid streets. So I'm asking for approval on that.
Okay, so wishes, council?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion councillor Hoffman.
Support.
Support by councillor Bayless. John, this is, will be combined with them, so they're hiring or they're, we're hiring them?
It's a, it's a combined, what is this here? This is Jesse's. It's to work with the St. Louis county maintenance programs. So there's an agreement with them, so it'd be a combined.
A partnership.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, and you said that state aid could be used for the, the large.
To cover the state aid streets.
We're covered on twenty-five thousand within an operating budget.
Yes.
Good. Any other questions? Hearing all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Thank you, John.
Thanks.
We move on to head minister's report. Mr. Przinski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council. I have three items that I would just like to touch on this evening. Item number one, one of our priorities and one of our goals is getting our emergency siren system back up and running. That project actually kicked off last week. The goal will be to have that system, system up and running as soon as possible, but we want to be able to participate in the National Weather Awareness Week, which comes up in April of twenty twenty-four. So that's up and running. Remember, we will be changing a couple of the locations. We did some heat mapping, trying to figure out where we can get kind of the biggest bang for the buck, so to speak. So there'll be some changes. We're working with the PUC on the poles and trying to get all that stuff up and, up and running. Item number two for this evening, round three of our thought exchange. Remember for our facility assess project, we've been doing a engagement process, which is including that thought exchange. Round three wrapped up late last week. I will send a quick email to the city council that summarizes that round three question. We'll post it on our website and then I think at the next city council meeting, we will update the city council and our, and our residents on next steps when it comes to the facility assessment, specifically this building, so we can talk a little bit more about that. And then the last thing I want to give to the city council and our residents, our pickleball courts. Remember, we were trying to get that project done during the twenty twenty construction season. We will be installing the fences, but we will hold off until spring to do the final striping on those courts. We have reached out to our collaborators on that project. They kind of know what's going on there, but because the weather has changed, it's been wet and cool, we want to make sure that that project is built for the long term and we think will be best when it comes to that final outcome. So those are the three items this evening. If city council has questions, I'll try to address those.
All right. I'll ask council if they have any questions. Greg, I think that's a great idea on the lining. I mean, not to let lines go through the winter and where, I mean, even though it isn't where, it's weather. So fencing will go in this year, so this line will be left.
Correct.
So will that be rebid or are we doing the lining of that?
The lining is part of the original contract. We've got a general on that and there's a sub that's going to do that work, so.
So it'll be at the same rate then?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
So the lines and the whole surface will go on at that time?
Correct.
Yeah, not just the lines, but the court surface.
I meant the surface, but yeah, that last step will be all.
Perfect.
Great.
All right, thank you, Greg. No other questions. We'll move on to bids and quotes. Superintendent, wastewater, Mr. Herd.
Mayor, council members, I have two things to say. One is just for the approval of our biosolids hauling for the invoice this year. Came in at fifty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars and sixty-five cents, and this is a budgeted item. We're a little over twenty thousand under budget on this. As for Fergus Power Pump to come in and empty our lagoon and write our biosolids on our, on our site and reseed it.
Very good. Hearing what Mr. Herd had to say. Wishes of the council?
Motion approve.
Motion approved by councillor Swyberger.
Support.
Support by councillor Whitney. What site will it be? The Hibbacc or our twenty-fifth street site?
This, this one on the twenty-first street site.
Twenty-fifth street?
Yeah, we lost our Hibbacc site.
Okay, I remember you talking.
Yep.
And thank you. We don't very often get to approve something that's under budget by twenty grand. That's kind of nice.
If we went into Hibbacc, it'd be real close to, you know, with the budget, so we saved that much more money not having all as far.
Great, thank you.
Very good. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Be, Dave.
Yeah, the second item I have is for a rebuild of Vertic Urban Pump number five. This is in our, this is a budgeted item. Been trying to do one per year. This will be on our fourth one. We'll have two more to go. I sent this out for bids and we have a real short window when we can have that pump down due to spring flooding and stuff like that. So I sent it out to four different companies, two local, two down by the cities. Three of the companies had done work for us before doing these pumps. Only one came back with a bid. Everyone else said they're either too busy or going behind the timeline. So I would recommend going with Applied Industries in the amount of sixty-four thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixty cents. And that's just for like a normal lift or nothing wrong with it.
Very good. Hearing what Mr. had to say. Wishes of the council?
Make a motion.
Motion by councillor Bayless.
Support.
Support by councillor Whitney. I'm sure this is a budgeted item from twenty twenty-three?
Yes.
Very good. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Again, Mr. Corolla.
Thank you, mayor, council. This one, I'm just looking for approval of payment of eight thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars and seventeen cents to the Hibbing Raceway Association. This is for pit building repairs that they did over the season. If you remember, in our agreement with the race association, they supply the labor and do the work and we pay for the material. So this is the price for the materials and that work that they did this summer. So just looking for your approval to payment.
Very good. That's a win-win. Hearing what Mr. Corolla had to say. Wishes of the council?
Approve.
Motion approved by councillor Swyberger.
Support.
By councillor Hoffman. Any discussion? Yes.
So on the agenda, I had put the non-taxable, I mean, it's without the tax. I assume that's what we would reimburse them as. I know that they paid tax when they bought the products. How do you handle that? Because otherwise it would be nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and sixty-four cents, including the tax. But the city doesn't pay tax, so that's why I'm wondering.
We could approve it up to the amount with tax. The state law is, is that if we reimburse anyone else who pays for something who's not tax exempt, that we have to pay the tax to them when we reimburse them, but I guess up to us if we want to reimburse them for that tax because they're not exempt.
I mean, I'm. Yeah, discussion, council.
I would, I would reimburse it for the, for the full value of the tax.
Six hundred bucks.
Still support that.
Okay. Have the tax.
Yep, so the total then would be nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and sixty-four cents.
Would I, would be an amendment then, Andy?
Councillor Swyberger, that, that was your motion. I had to think it was surgery. You're, you're fine with that and then councillor Bayless is fine with the second.
No, I seconded it. So that's okay.
I'm okay with it, too.
Yeah, you're up to it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Hearing all was said. Discussion anymore? Hearing none. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Thanks again. Public Works, so then, Mr. Urtich.
Mayor and council, I'm here to ask for approval of a twenty twenty-five international rapid rail side loader garbage truck for three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-four cents. This would be replacing a two thousand and ten rapid rail garbage truck. We've got some really old trucks that need replacing to keep us into, to make sure we can get our roads done and keep up with the race here. So I'm asking for approval. The truck should be here if we order it, get approved and ordered. It should be here in the first quarter of twenty-five.
Okay. Hearing what Mr. Urtich has to say. Wishes of the council?
Make the motion to approve.
We have a motion. Councillor Bayless, supported by councillor Swyberger. This is a discussion?
Yeah.
This is the one we discussed earlier. Am I correct, Mr. Przinski?
Mayor, city council, yes, it is the one that we've discussed earlier and we'll be workshopping some of this equipment that we're going to need. And part of the problem that we're having is not just the financing piece, but the procurement. So a lot of these trucks and pieces of equipment are in that twelve to thirty-six months delivered. What we're trying to do is, we're trying to get in the do or in the hop or however you want to describe that. So if our capital plan calls for a truck in twenty-two-four, but we can't get it until twenty twenty-five, you know, we're trying to like get out ahead of it. So we won't actually spend the money until we take delivery of it. Wars won't start until we take delivery of it, but the point is, is we need the equipment as soon as possible. So we're trying to get it ordered. And remember, like our sanitation vehicles, there's an outfit that we have to do. So we order the cab and the chassis and the power comes in. Oftentimes that triggers payment for that piece and then it goes out to a third party vendor to get fitted, whether that's a sanitation body or a dump body, whatever happens to be the case. So what we're doing is we're trying to work with Sheena and her team on trying to ladder all of these purchases, make sure the money's there, make sure that we get the order when it needs to happen. But most importantly, we're trying to make sure that we have the equipment when we need it the most. So that's the short version. We'll workshop this and just try to give you a little bit more context on it.
So we're ordering a twenty-four truck in twenty-three, but the payment will come in twenty-four and then further in the road with, because you're talking chassis and two components for this truck.
That's what we're anticipating.
Yeah, good. Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay, boards and commissions, nothing. Licenses and permits. Approve the raffle permit application request. Precious pause on Society of Chisholm to hold their raffle at Pecan Hill Entry School on Saturday, November fourth, twenty twenty-three. Wishes of the council?
Motion approve.
Motion approved by councillor Bayless.
Support.
Support by councillor Whitney. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Motion carries. Number two, approve the special event permit application Masabi Rains Youth for Christ to hold their campus life party on Monday, October thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, on Seventh New East from the L E North, twenty twelve, Seventh East to Twenty-first Street. Wishes of the council?
Motion approve.
Motion approved by councillor Swyberger.
Support.
Support by councillor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Three, approve the raffle permit application request to the Hibbing Blue Jet Wrestling Fans Club to hold their raffle on Saturday, March twentieth, twenty twenty-four at the Hibbing Memorial Arena. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by councillor Hoffman.
Support.
Support by councillor Whitney. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Four, approve the temporary on cell liquor license from Boomtown to dispense alcohol at the Android November fourth, December first, second, eighth, fifteenth, sixteenth, and thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Wishes of the council?
Motion approve.
Motion approved by councillor Bayless.
Support.
Support by councillor Swyberger. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Number five, approve the raffle permission request of the CAG Foundation to hold the raffle on Tuesday, May first, twenty twenty-four at City Auto Line. Wishes of the council?
Motion approve.
Motion approved by councillor Swyberger.
Support.
Support by councillor Whitney. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay? All in favor, aye. Motion carries, sorry. Number six, approve the twenty twenty-three two AM liquor license permit for the Do You fourteen East Howard Street. Wishes of the council?
Motion approve.
Motion approved by councillor Bayless.
Support.
Support by councillor Swyberger. Any discussion?
Has things gotten better? I know we've gotten a lot of complaints outside behind Steve and Chief, you might know, as far as people mingling, urinating in alleys, just, you know, two AM stuff. Has that gotten better?
You know, we met with them, what was it, two, three months ago?
And since then, it's gotten a lot better. He's tamed it down a lot, more respectful to the officers and the patrons. So far, so good.
Do they, do they go to two AM currently?
That's it.
Do they currently go to two AM?
Two AM right now.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I just want everybody to know that because lies for it in twenty twenty-three, we consider it a twenty-three license. It goes through this time next year, but it's still considered a twenty-three through the state.
Very good. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Seven, approve the raffle permit application by Subgonquin Youth Activities Association, A Y A, to hold their raffney, raffle on Tuesday, April ninth, twenty-four at the Elgonquin Club. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by councillor Hoffman.
Support.
Support by councillor Whitney. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Now we move on to recognition of Chase. I do have something I want to read and. Tonight, we'd like to take this opportunity to recognize K-9 Chase, who has been with our department for over five years, and handler Officer Burns, who has been with us since two thousand and fourteen. Since Chase has been in the service, he assisted in locating over two thousand grams of meta, of meth, over forty grams of heroin and several pounds marijuana. Chase has been used assistant over fee arrests, three of them Chase had to physically apprehend and capture of the suspect. Chase was instrumental locating a missing juvenile last April, when the team would have likely not survived another hour in a swamp if not for Chase's assistance. And last week, I forget the time Chase won America's top dog, which brought our community national attention. Thank you, Chase and Officer Burns, for your dedication and bravery to our community. We will treat you dearly and wish you both the best. Okay, what's going on here? We're going to find. Okay, and at this time, the agenda item is a pending litigation. What we have next to Hibbing versus Todd Hyatt and the Public Employees Retirement Association of Minnesota. This portion of the B will be closed pursuant to Minnesota Statute, section one B D point oh five subdivision three B. The grounds for closing it are as follows. The city need absolute confidentiality outweighs purposes served by the open law, in this case, based on the following. Absolute confidentiality is necessary so the city council and legal council can have a candid and discussion to determine available legal options to handle litigation, including response strategy and possible areas of conciliation. The purpose of the closed meeting is not to make decisions behind closed orders, but instead the purpose of the meeting is to determine the legal options for handling the litigation. The only business to be discussed is the pending litigation. An open session would be detrimental because it may take place in the presence of individuals involved in litigation.